James Neil Sigata has caused the seal of the city of Raton, New Mexico, affixed this twenty-third day of May of April two thousand and twenty-four. Signed, James Neil Sigata, Junior Mayor.
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Next up Motorcycle Awareness Month, May twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Honeyfield.
Okay, proclamation Motorcycle Awareness Month, May twenty twenty-four. Whereas motorcycles are used as regular means of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation in and around Raton, New Mexico. And whereas the Raton scenic roadways make motorcycling a very popular destination for riders from around the country. And whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of acquired skills developed through a combination of training and experience, the use of good judgment and thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas it is imperative that the residents of Raton be aware, show consideration, and share the road with motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has declared May as Motorcycle Awareness Month, it is the desire of the Office of the Mayor to join the NHTSA in raising awareness of the growing number of motorcyclists on Raton's roadways in order to help prevent accidents and, most importantly, save lives. And now therefore be it resolved that I, James Neil Sigata, Junior, Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as Motorcycle Awareness Month and urge our citizens to be observant, courteous, knowledgeable about motorcycle usage in our community. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this twenty-third day of April twenty twenty-four.
Alrighty, next we have Arbor Day, April twenty-second through twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. That's Mayor Pro Tim Chatter.
Proclamation, celebrate Arbor Day, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore does James Neil Sigata, Junior, Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day. And thanks the Colfax SWCD, the NRCS, and INBANK for their efforts with the third-grade classes in Raton, Springer, Maxwell, and Simron. And further urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, he has heretofore set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this twenty-third day of April twenty twenty-four. Signed, James Neil Sigata, Junior Mayor.
Do you want to join in the picture, Jennifer? You're with INBANK.
Yes.
You owe me one for this.
And finally, Fifty-Fifth Annual Municipal Clerks Week, May fifth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Proclamation, Fifty-Fifth Annual Municipal Clerks Week, May fifth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizen, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk, now therefore do I, James Neil Sigata, Junior, Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four as Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Ezra Trujillo, Deputy Clerk, Michaelan Antenucci, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this twenty-third day of April twenty twenty-four. Ladies? All right, moving on. Committee reports from Commissioners. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacobo.
Metro Public Service Assembly Board of Directors meeting met on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four at six p.m. Robin Osborne, Office Manager, best staff representative, presented to and approved by the Board of Financial and Strategic Information. The union approved the pole detachment license agreement, also discussed and accepted with the pole attachment agreement annual cost. Discussion and approval of travel for Robin Osborne to attend the code conference in Indianapolis, May eighteen to twenty-third, May. Also discussed was an approval of travel for Robert James and Robert Jones and Abe Martinez to attend the Landis Gray training in Indianapolis, May fifth to eleventh. Also discussed but postponed was the pole agreement and the agreement of annual pole attachment costs pending more information. Raton Public Service General Manager Dave Pencino reported on his assigned working crew's jobs from trimmages to general daily reporting and also for new employees. Also, there was no library for the meeting this month.
Thank you. Commissioner Schuster.
All right. April sixteenth, in the afternoon, there was a meeting of minds for the Education Working Group chaired by Dr. Ken Erickson, where ideas for ideas that with realistic possibilities for bringing increased educational opportunities to Raton were discussed. This was an initial meeting, and additional meetings will be scheduled monthly, I believe. Raton Water Works Board Meeting was later that evening on April sixteenth. The agenda included several items for consideration, including two thousand and twenty-three Consumer Confidence Report, the U M W A Union Contract Acknowledgement for F Y twenty-three Audit Reports, F Y twenty-four Budget Adjustment Request Number One, Proposed Budget for F Y twenty-five, Raton Water Works procurement process. There was a large discussion, consideration of a quote for the Core and Main, from Core and Main, for meter-reading equipment upgrades and the manager's report. Lake Maloya is full and spilling. The filter plant usage for March was twenty-three point five mg with a peak flow of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand gallons. On April seventeenth, there was a lodger's tax meeting. On the agenda were items considered for budget reports and funding requests. Accepted were proposals, including, accepted proposals included Raton Little League by Hillary Bisqually, run to Raton for July nineteenth through the twenty-first by Mike Patterson. Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, fifth, sixth, and seventh by Raton Main Street. Dawson, New Mexico Reunion, August thirty-first by Chair Bobby Joe Blaca. And Cinco de Mayo Celebration by Organizer Carmen Martinez. Not accepted at this time was a request from Adventures of Colt Ballot Show by Isaiah Dimmer. We will be discussing these items later in the agenda in full. There was also a report from Patricia Duran, CCI Director, regarding exploring Raton, Google Ads, and media management. Their next meeting will be May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On April nineteenth, I rode out with our city manager Rick Mastas over to Guyman, Oklahoma, to meet with their city officials to discuss and learn about the structure and relationship that they have with the Shawnee Tribe and how it's increased economic development in their area. Also in attendance were Mayor Pro Tim Laurie Chatterley, Jason Phillips, Scott Berry, and the esteemed Picarus Pueblo Governor and his attending authorities. It is, it was a productive meeting, and I believe will lead to some positive relationship with the people of the Picarus Pueblo. As many of you know, I'm not that in favor of an actual casino, but I believe we can, we'll create a great working relationship with the Picarus Pueblo and have additional opportunities beyond a casino that I think will be good for us and them. I believe we can attain the same level of cooperative economic development that the people of Guyman, Oklahoma, and the Shawnee Tribe have. As Jane Goodall once said, only when our clever brains and our human hearts work together can we reach our full potential.
Mayor Pro Tim.
On April fourth, I attended the Town Hall meeting at the Convention Center along with several others from the city. It was a great overview of what's going on in our community and city and organizations. The crime statistics presented by the law enforcement officials were particularly interesting. If you missed it, K R T N has the meeting posted on their Facebook page on April fourth, and I also shared it on my Facebook Commission page. April eleventh, I attended the Ports to Plains Board Meeting via Zoom. The Alliance has been very busy with outreach and advocacy meetings and speaking engagements in several states along the corridor. Planning is underway for the annual conference, which will be in Dickinson, North Dakota in September. The executive team is working hard on membership growth, increased newsletter coverage, increased media coverage, and increased digital communication. President and CEO Lauren Gardunio reported that he had a good visit with the NMDOT executive leadership in December to discuss potential strategies along the New Mexico portion of the Ports to Plains or I twenty-seven corridor. This was followed up with a meeting with the Chair of the New Mexico Transportation Finance Committee while at the Union County Legislative Day in Santa Fe. One outcome was a standing invitation to come back to that committee annually and give updates on Ports to Plains in New Mexico. All of these efforts help build relationships as we seek planning monies for future I twenty-seven, I twenty-five interchange in Raton. Along with Commissioner Schuster, I attended the Water Board Meeting on April sixteenth. The only thing that I would add to that very fine report was, I believe, the three-million-dollar filter tank project was before the State Water Trust Board today, so hopefully we'll be hearing final news on that soon. I also attended the, I arranged and attended the trip to Guyman, Oklahoma, with the City of Guyman regarding their experiences with the Golden Mesa Casino Project. I believe we are, so Commissioner Schuster mentioned everyone from the City of Raton that attended, along with the Picarries from Guyman. We met with the Mayor, Ken Peterson, interim city manager, Mike Shannon, assistant manager, Ginger Clevenger, as well as their Economic Development Director and other city staff. I felt the visit was very informative and worth the trip. They gave us the city's perspective and a lot of data from their end since the casino opened in September two thousand and nineteen. As a side note, as soon as they had opened, the casino shut down for seven months due to COVID, but the tribe took care of the employees during that time and didn't let anyone go. That particular casino is on a hundred and six acres of land, and because it was so far out of the city limits, they decided to go with their own wells and sewer. The Economic Development Director gave a database presentation with statistics on direct, indirect, and induced jobs. Induced jobs were jobs, which I had to kind of look this up, were jobs created in town by, because of the employees, like grocery stores needing more employees because we had more people in town working for the casino. Their growth reported was incredible for them, with two hundred and twenty-four total jobs with seven point five million in income. The job numbers are expected to grow there by a hundred and thirty-eight more jobs because they're planning to expand, well, they're actually already underway in expanding the casino and building a hotel. The mayor remarked that these are well-paid jobs with good hourly wages and tips, and that these jobs have improved the quality of life exponentially for some people in Guyman. The expansion will have a hundred and twenty-six point five million in output to the community, and the original build was an eighty-five million output to the community. The presentation also included visitor statistics for the casino itself using Placer software, so this was all city data. This wasn't tribal data. The total visits in twenty twenty-one were around four hundred thousand visits. Twenty twenty-two was around three hundred and eighty-six thousand visits, and twenty twenty-three was around four hundred and twenty thousand visits. Although they saw the dip in visitors in twenty twenty-two, the unique visitors have grown every year. In twenty twenty-one, they had seventy-six thousand unique visitors. Twenty twenty-two was eighty-one thousand, and twenty twenty-three was eighty-nine thousand. When leaving the casino, one top statistic was, as they left, people tended to visit local gas stations and the Walmart. They're doing some roadwork, and they chose the roadworks particularly in a certain place so that they can have people come to town first before heading out to the casino. The mayor did address many topics, including that they've seen no ill effects related to drugs, crime, or prostitution. Guyman itself has been awarded the safest city in Oklahoma and one of the top safest cities in the nation. They do see a huge influx of Texans on the weekends, especially in restaurants, even though the casino does have a restaurant that is leased and run by a local person. Their expansion does include the new hotel, which they said would relieve some pressure because the local hotels are at capacity. New home construction is skyrocketing with people buying homes as soon as a development is announced, and the housing market is really strong. The tribal presence has helped the community with funding for federal programming. And they also, when they were trying to work out the police and fire, they worked on an agreement with the B I A to make that happen so that the city could provide police and fire protection on that property. The overall takeaways and top benefits to the City of Guyman were quality job creation with a thriving workforce, economic growth, a catalyst for tourism with a geographically increasing pool of visitors. So they were looking all across the country, and some of the data could have been people who are working, but a lot of it is showing that they're getting visitors from increasingly different places and not just Texas. And also that visitors are staying longer, the strong housing market, and the tribe has been a wonderful community partner for them, that partnership that they've worked on, and helped with a lot of social programs. The City of Guyman offered their support in any possible way that we need it here in Raton and offered that we could use, or they could show us sample agreements to help as we move forward. For me, the key takeaway for us is building relationships for success and the economic impact of this project. I also did learn more about the Picarus Pueblo on this visit as well. I didn't know that they have a very large solar array that offsets the cost of their tribal member electric bills that they started in twenty eighteen. Theirs, their goal is a hundred percent off-grid living, and they're almost there. You can Google that. There's a lot of really great information online about what they've done with that project. They also have an archaeological field school. Again, a Google search will tell you a lot about what they're doing there. And their annual feast day is coming up on August tenth. We do hope to have some representatives, the Governor Quincello, Lieutenant Governor Anthony, Nitter and other council and tribal members up to Raton to maybe have a public reception soon so everybody can meet these people. In terms of other responsibilities, the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board Meeting is Thursday in Santa Fe, and I'll be attending that. And the Municipal League hasn't set out the next board meeting date at this time. That's what I had.
Thank you. All right, that's for myself. Did attend the Town Hall, caught the last half of it on April fourth, attended the RPS meeting last night with Commissioner Jacobo. On March twenty-eighth, I attended the New Mexico, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Executive Board Meeting, discussed upcoming fiscal year, twenty-five goals and directives. Like Mayor Pro Tim said, we have a meeting coming up Thursday. We'll be attending that. We had a New Mexico Self Insurers Fund Board on March twenty-seventh in Santa Fe. It was a fifteen-minute meeting. We just had to get together to build on some funds being moved around. The Self Insurers Fund Annual Conference is coming up in Salt Lake, May eighth through the tenth. Have not decided yet if I'm going to attend that because right after that, we have the Self Insurers Fund Budget Meeting beginning on May twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. Those will be held in Taos, so I'm going to pick one, not the other. And that's all I've got. Alrighty. Item six, items from citizens present. At this time, we will entertain any comments from the folks here in the commission chambers. However, if it's something relating to an item on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. So at this time, what do you want to like to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to the action items. Item seven, A, deliberate natural rule of the April ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. I believe you have a copy?
Motion to approve the minutes?
I will abstain as well. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Item B, Presentation, Skill Sharp, Center for Community Innovation, excuse me, Executive Director, Patricia Duran.
Evening, Commissioner. I am the Executive Director for the Center for Community Innovation, and here with me is Bianca Patterson, our Skill Sharp Administrator. When we met with y'all back in last September on Skill Sharp, I just want to say once again thank you for funding our program and our workforce development efforts in the City of Raton. I believe this year, within the progress we've made in the last six months, that we are out of our pilot stages for this program. We've discovered what works, what doesn't work, how we need to, you know, address some of the things that we were, issues we were having with in terms of technology, hands-on work with our workers, things like that. And so we're really excited. We've made a lot of headway, and you'll definitely see that there has been an uptick in the usage of Skill Sharp. We've created a completely round-rounded approach between high school equivalency testing all the way to those entering the workforce, those kind of dipping their toe our young ends that we don't want to lose whenever they do leave, and if they do leave, they might want to come back. And so we've really created a way to work with the high school, with our agencies across the city, our businesses. We've really made headway in trying to push our skilled trades catalog as well as, you know, just anything that, any up-and-coming industries that we're seeing, and specifically like graphic design and film that we're trying to invest in now. So we're really taking those approaches seriously, and we're trying to create a better future. With that, we did apply for a grant back in October with the Macron Family Foundation, and we got a twenty thousand dollar grant to fund this, and they were really excited. One of their main focuses is focusing on those, the up-and-coming workforce from the high school and those that are specifically displaced youth, youth that may have not had a great, you know, step off in life and who want to improve their lives and also want to become great community members. So we worked with them, we got the grant, and so they are funding us this year. They're really excited to see our progress as well for this next October when we do apply again, and I believe we've created a great partnership with them. So with that, I will hand it off to Bianca, and she will give you some statistics and some information on what she's been doing and how the things that we've changed.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. So if you look at the second page that's there, this is just a few of the companies that I've been able to partner with and businesses, which is the Human Service Department, Crossroads Integrative Health Recovery Solutions, Pinwheel Healing, Raton Probation and Parole Offices, Raton High School, Rio Grande, Lancer Health Group. And then just recently, we started partnering with Trinidad State College. We're doing workshops there now for resume building and interview skills. And just the next few pages are just my day-to-day, what I'm doing, I'm meeting with people, resume building, leadership building. So if we go to the last page, on the corner on the right, these are the resume building workshops that I've done. We've done two so far, and we had about maybe ten people attend, but I do one-on-one as well. So I've done fifty-two clients that I've assisted in rebuilding their resumes. Nineteen of them are in their desired position that they weren't in before, and thirty-three of them have, are still looking for employment. Some are employed, but they're not in the position that they wanted to be in. And then if you look at Skill Sharp, the Skill Sharp on the top, the top part on the left, we started out from January to December twenty twenty-two with fifty clients. Then when we went to January to June of twenty twenty-three, we had up almost a hundred and fifty, and up to, up to now, we have almost two hundred and forty-five clients that we're helping right now. And on the pie chart on the bottom, if you can see, from January to December twenty twenty-two, we had eleven logins onto the, onto the Skill Sharp program. From January to June twenty twenty-three, we had sixty logins. And since, since I took over in July until now, we've had a thousand and one logins to the Skill Sharp. And then if you go next to it, from January to December twenty twenty-two, we had thirty-four certificates that were given out. From January to June twenty twenty-three, we had fourteen certificates given out. And since July until now, we've had two hundred and seventy-three certificates that have been given out for people completing courses. And I think that's amazing. What I have been doing is I've been keeping up with people, making phone calls. When I don't see, because what I, what I've, what I've established with the metrics learning is let's not just let them get in here, let's give them a pathway, let's give them clusters, let's give them courses. What do you want to do? Let's put you on it. So I make sure that not only do we sit face to face and I communicate, this is what I expect of you, and please expect for me to be there for you at any time. And I've completely given my time to making sure that they have the encouragement that they need to succeed, and they've, they've been completing these pathways. And so for the high-set client, which is the, the high-set prep is the first one, it's a non H E P, those are people that didn't want to go through the classes, that are just self-learners, and we've given them the, the things that they need to succeed and to learn on their own. There's ten clients right now that are in the process of, and they've been taking, taking and passing some and failing some tests. And then for the H E P, which is the high-set through Luna College, we have seven clients right now that are going through the right now that are going through the classes. And then we've had so far two certs for highs, for completing their high set. And then we have two more that should be finishing next week. So I think that's, that's really good. And we also have partnered with Help New Mexico and they help, because we're really trying to focus on like the young adults, especially the ones that have dropped out of school. Because it's been like a really high rate that I've seen. So, we were working with Help New Mexico and they're helping us with anybody 24 and younger, they'll help, they'll pay them to get their, their high set certificates. So, not only will they pay them when they get it, but they'll give them some money throughout. So as long as they're working and I make sure that I keep up with them, like hey, we got to make sure we're doing some tests, we got to do something. Because they'll, they give them funds too, so it actually helps fund the tests that they're taking. So I think that's been like a really good incentive for the younger adults in Rattone and the Colfax area. But that's it.
One last thing, thank you. One last thing is that we have, we've created computer lab hours. So, if people want to study specifically for their high set or get on their metrics or they don't have a computer, we make sure that we are there so that they are utilizing it. And pretty much every day, there's probably two or three people using that computer lab. And so it's been really, really neat to have Bianca here and to have her sit face to face and, and hold their hands. Because trying to, you know, jump into the workforce when you don't know that much or when you haven't finished high school is a really daunting task. And so I feel that we're doing a great job at tackling that in the last six months and it's, it's been really rewarding to watch people walk out with their. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation from Rattone Adventure Center.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and City Manager. We're Sandra and Shane Young of the Rattone Adventure Center at 216 South First Street and we are here for our first annual report. We won the Coors Building RFP and entered into a lease agreement signed on May 16th, 2023. I do have a typo in your report, it does say 2022. Since that day, we began the extensive cleanup of the property, removing decades of debris and various unwanted items from the building. And then our main focus was on the ground floor. As of July 20th, 2023, we've had the Rattone Adventure Center and Hoag Leather open on the first floor. Both businesses selling goods and paying taxes as remodeling continues on a daily basis. We've made the necessary repairs to secure the building, installed a security system and have done our best to make the storefront enticing and noticeable. During our first summer of occupancy, the degree of ongoing damage from the water was discovered and assessed and the city is currently working to effect repairs. While we wait for this phase of the project to be complete, the Rattone Adventure Center continues to grow. We've been getting inventory in, I've been building fixtures and we've been expanding. We see a steady flow of both locals and tourists as customers. For our part, after the initial cleanup, we have mitigated damage from broken pipes and water leaks. We've upgraded lighting to energy-efficient LED fixtures and we've taken over all the utilities on the property. The Kangaroo Cafe has been added to the business platform since the original RFP was submitted and it'll occupy the back of the first floor. We've already begun the process of becoming restaurant managers and have consulted with the Department of Health regarding the layout and design of the kitchen and to make sure that we're code compliant and also that we can expand if needed in the future. We've done our best to promote our own business as well as others downtown. We participate or sponsor all of the events. We've enjoyed being a part of all the Main Street activities as well as participating in the Run to Rattone, events at the Schuler and events at Sugar Eate and Out of Rameho. We will continue to support and volunteer at these events and open our doors at Coors to support them as well. We're even working with the Western Packboro Association to bring multiple Packboro races to Rattone and to Colfax County. As most of you know, we've hosted the out-of-town Economic Development attendees and officials and have been pleased to share our experience at the Coors Building as well as encourage others to come to Rattone and start a business. We look forward to finalizing our designs of the Rattone Bunkhouse on the second floor and the down under printing business in the basement once the current construction is complete. We've done our best to collect local period items for the Rattone Bunkhouse as well as solicited local artists for decor. And it's really important to us that we preserve the history and keep it a part of the building and the experience that we're going to provide. We're looking forward to what we consider our first year in business this summer as we continue to work on the additions of the Kangaroo Cafe first and then the Bunkhouse and the Print Center. And I've seen many of you down there, I appreciate you coming in to take a look. It's definitely going to be morphing on a monthly basis, especially now that the weather has turned, since we had no heat in the building, it was a little bit of a struggle this winter to get some, some major progress done. But, and Jaden has been amazing to work with, keeping on top of, of the issues as they, as they've been coming up. Really good communication, I thank everybody for, for that. It's been, it's been a good, easy partnership so far.
Cool, I'd like to hear that. Questions, comments? Appreciate everything you guys are doing, can't wait till it's fully functional. Next up, El Rattone Media Works.
Good evening. For those I haven't met yet, I am Becky Laird, I'm the President of El Rattone Media Works. And we are gonna go through all we've been doing, there's a lot, I'm here, all right, ready? Most recently, we have been meeting with the architects and the city engineers since December to review the building plans, architectural plans and the progress of the construction. We have been advising them of our needs, the uses for the building and the various spaces within the facility. We believe that these meetings are progressing very smoothly, we feel that they've been very productive. And we would like to extend our appreciation to the city for your collaboration and support during these meetings and during this part of the process. It's slow and it just takes time. We have begun purchasing equipment, we got an amazing end-of-the-year deal on equipment during the writer and actor strikes, yay. The city has provided secure storage during the renovation and the construction part of the period as we are not allowed to occupy the building, including equipment storage due to the grant-related procedures. Unfortunately, the timeline is out of our control, but we are doing what we can to keep things going and progress the project as quickly as possible. So, the renovations and lease waiver fee terms require a public economic benefit realized within the community. So we agree to occupy and utilize the Kearney School Facility during a 10-year term and we will participate with the city in evaluating the community economic development metrics resulting from the use of the facility. We are required, or the project shall create and sustain not less than five new jobs within three years after project commencement for a minimum of three years. Then, not less than five additional new jobs within six years of project commencement for a minimum period of three years, and additional five new jobs within nine years. That's a total of 13 jobs within nine years after the commencement of the project. And as per our agreement, the project will not commence until the construction is complete and we are able to occupy the facility. We are also working on securing additional investment for the purpose of equipment, staffing, furnishing, operating and completing additional renovations and improvements. This includes, we recently secured a $20,000 audio/video and office supply donation from a school that was closing in Denver. So we have already started building our AV and office supplies. We have also secured office cubicle furniture donation from Andrew Leaf, I hope I pronounced that correctly, slash N Bank. So we are working on securing office furniture as well. We did secure a grant from Barnai Ranch for equipment and supplies related to volunteer youth media programs such as the Film Prize Junior. We also partnered with Mora Media Comments to apply for the USDA RISE and the RBDG grants. Unfortunately, we did not get those, but we are still partnering with local, other media programs to get more grants. We are continuously looking for grant opportunities, donation opportunities for education operations as well as equipment and construction. We're also working with the architects to determine how much of the work we can do ourselves. We have recently cleaned the portable up at Kearney, we've added to our storage space during construction. So technically, because that's not part of the big building, we are allowed to share, use that for some of the AV and office supply storage. We are also asking them, what work can we do on a volunteer basis ourselves to save money in the budget? Do we really need to pay a construction crew to come and do things like removing and reusing the ceiling tiles, cleaning, repurposing every fixture and piece of furniture in the building that we can, doing the cabling and integration of our studio equipment ourselves? We're trying to save money, save effort and reuse as much as possible. We're also recently competed in the Film Biz Sprint with New Mexico State University at the Arrowhead Center and ongoing and in progress is our strategic planning and board development. Job targeting, back to that, this is where we anticipate that our revenue will come from. Education and workforce training, contract work for videos and technical services, small production rentals and services once the facilities are complete, and then also studio space and space rentals when the facilities are complete. Regional locations, production support, offices, equipment rentals, as well as those induced jobs in the area. Public benefit, what are we doing now, what's within our scope? Workforce education, we have secured a partnership with Santa Fe Community College and Rattone High School to provide SFCC dual-credit media classes at Rattone High School and we have launched the Film Technician Certification and Career Pathway. They have already completed one PSA, several short films and they are currently working on intergenerational digital stories.
Actually on our third film.
Oh yeah, okay, great. And Anne is leading that there. We also attended the New Mexico Media Education Summit, we represented our region with all film media college dual-credit programs. We introduced media and film careers to over 100 students at Career Day at Rattone High School with assistance from our, from two local 480 union members and Marty Mayfield of KRTN helped us there. We're in our third year of volunteering to provide free mentorship for Film Prize Junior participants at a statewide film competition. Doubt Defiers by Cristiana Piancino, voting ended yesterday, the timing is terrible, I would have urged you all to vote next year. And then beyond the net, we pushed that submission back to 2025 due to age and animation, the complexity of the film. So we do already have something scheduled slated for next year. We've done a public demonstration of the Keycode Brainstorm 3D software. We have monthly filmmaker meetups where we support, grow and encourage locals to be part of all of this and the film industry in Rattone. We also hope to participate in the New Mexico Creative Industries Week in June of 2024. We met with several other creatives within the community and we're hoping to, to have a spot there. Development of viables and, or viable commercial operations. So, these are current, recurring revenues to make our operations sustainable such as marketing and locations promotions. We recently secured a Google's Ad Grant of $10,000 a month in free advertising on Google, which is no small feat. We also are marketing Rattone as a space for creatives and filmmaking and we have secured the professional services of a Google Ads Grant Specialist who is providing in-kind donations to build out these ad campaigns. So we're on there, we're getting it out, we're advertising, we're finding the best way to stay at the top of the Google searches. We're also doing film liaison work such as performing duties as a regional film office. We've spoken with several producers and directors, we've had someone come in from Albuquerque to develop a database on Rattone locations for the state film office. So the state film office is interested in putting us, or is putting us in their location database. We've also had a producer come from Albuquerque to scout locations for various scripts he already has. We've had someone from Taos, a producer-director, visited Rattone to scout locations for a TV series. And then we've also had a producer from Denver looking for film productions incentives. Statewide, Colorado, New Mexico, they're coming, they're hearing, we're talking. We're developing a database of crew businesses and locations. We're also developing a location brochure, drone videos, and we are growing that database. We've also completed some state film office trainings, we've had production assistance training and film liaison training. So even as much as we think we know, we are still growing and trying to get as many certifications and trainings under our belt or cross-training as well. We're also collaborating with Denver Film Foundation, New Mexico Film Foundation, New Mexico Local 480 IOTC Training Department, Haythor Studios, hope I pronounced that right, Law Office, Developing Intellectual Property and Copyright Training, that will be an issue, Greater New Mexico Media Collective and New Mexico Media Arts Collective. So our collaboration is far and wide as well. We also have some additional activities and benefits, things that we're doing around the community to keep the community interested. So, this year, we're doing, we were just at the, the event for Palestine, we are also going to be at the Fourth of July Event Participation, I believe we're going to be a...
Sponsor?
Uh huh, we are sponsored this year for that. There's also Bronco de, oh, there it is, I always thought these were in date order. Equipment for Rattone Economic Development Summit, equipment for the election forum, the Mixer Interviews Video Promotion Core Meeting, we do record those. Come learn about Palestine, Bronco de Mayo, Cinco de Mayo, again, I'm pronouncing these all wrong. Hack Mule Race, we're going to try to do some drone footage. So we're doing like live things that are going on in the community. A lot of these things are being done on volunteer basis where, you know, we're not going to charge you, but we'll take your donation. So if you know of anyone who's looking to donate to something good, needs something recorded, please, I'm not throwing out free work here, but at the same time, the more we get out there, the more people hear about us, the bigger this is going to be. We're also participating in like organizations across the region such as New Mexico Creative Industries Regional Advisor, Trinidad State Technical Theater Advisory Committee and the Trinidad High School Theater Tech Dual Credit Advisory Committee. So we're on several committees here in town and in Trinidad to get our youth more interested in the media and film industry. All right, future progress, the way forward. Workforce education, I mentioned that earlier. So we're going to expand our dual-credit programs with SFCC and other regional colleges. We've started small, we're going to get bigger. We're going to develop plans to offer adults training through the SFCC and/or other college film certification programs. So we want to make sure that it's not just youth-oriented, that adults in town can also get these certifications, team up with local IOTC unions, get the training that they need to start on a project or work in, on a project. We're going to expand education programs through partnerships with other vocational programs such as broadband, digital skills, coding, 3D printing, you name it. All of those things are part of the film industry and the local theater as well, helping out with that here. Industry outreach, we're going to expand location managers outreach campaigns, we're going to try to start an email campaign with targeted locations, news and media outreach expansion, partnering with our local media KRTN and other news sources. We hope to set up meetings with studios, production committees and producers, we want to seek investments, we want use agreements and/or partnerships. Community outreach, we will continue to expand our existing outreach and community engagement programs. Funding, that's the hard part. We will apply for labor and workforce development grants, we will apply for construction and equipment grants, we will apply for digital equity and technical education grants. Again, any grant that could possibly come our way, we have or will apply for those. We will also seek investors in the coming months for commercial growth and expansion once our grant money runs out or in partnership with our grant money. Team development, we're working on drone certifications, we do have at least two drone pilots, was that correct? We have two drone pilots that we, we're currently working with for location shoots and we hope to develop a drone certification program where people can learn and get licensed to be a licensed drone pilot. We're also working with emerging 3D software training and continued training in new applications and technology as they come along. Now, what do we need? Well, we need to... Well, we need to approve the film permitting process, and we need to add an option for business registration to sign up as a New Mexico vendor. And then we also need more locations, more contacts, more donations, more funding. We're progressing, but there's always going to be more that we need. And that's where we're at, at the moment. Subscribe and like us on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, please, please. Please check out our website. It is fabulously done. And basically, everything I've talked about today, a lot of it is already there. We also have a blog that we put out weekly about film industry themes or ideas. If anybody wants to sign up, has a location, wants to be on a crew, anything like that, please go to our website, sign up. We need the entire community involved. Thank you. Questions, concerns, comments?
Questions, comments? You mentioned the architect, are they cooperating?
They are very, very cooperative. Because as anybody in the construction industry knows, architects have a certain standard. And so they provide us with, here's the best we can do. And we're like, okay, our budget is here. Can you meet us closer to this? And they have been very cooperative. They're like, we can't do this because of this rule. And, and when we ask, when they say we can't do something or we don't recommend, and we ask why, they do always provide a valid reason. And if it's not valid, then we come to a compromise. I have not found any of my communications or interactions with them to be difficult. They've been very, very, very generous with their time and their effort and revising based on, because they don't know what a film studio needs. And they're like, oh, you need this in the room. And we're like, we don't need any of that. Just give us this. And they're like, oh, okay, great.
But like, are you participating with the process?
Yes, yes, yeah. They've been very communicative, please.
Yeah, we're meeting with them and updating the current funds that we have for construction, what we can get done for that money. So if they don't mind you guys...
No, they want us. They're like, please tell us what you need. What can we do? What can we do to make this better? And I think that they're appreciative of our level of involvement, because oftentimes, they're just given an idea and they, and they... Yeah. And I think that they've been very, very grateful for us explaining, well, no, we don't need that, but we do need this. And the purpose of it is for this. And they're like, oh, that makes sense. Take this out. So I think that they've been very, they've been very accommodating for us, I think.
And you're, can you gauge any kind of response so far with your Google advertising?
It's getting better slowly. But yeah, we're, we just started about, it was just a month or two ago.
Yeah, it was very recently.
The person who's giving this in-kind work for us. So he's working on it. It's actually really, we were really trying to focus on locations. And it turns out, people don't just Google random locations to find film places. So we're trying to like figure out what the right strategy is. And so that's one of the reasons we started the blog is because, you know, basically, you get a lot of words on a blog every single week and a lot of different topics. And that becomes something that, you know, Google indexes your website. And so the more words you have, the more you can pull people into it. So we've been sort of working at it that way. So we're definitely not spending the $10,000 a month right now. It's actually extremely hard to spend that much money.
I was going to say, I don't even know how you can spend that much.
They, you know, they want to keep the good words, you know, for the paying bit customers. So we have to ride that line. But it, but it's been improving slowly.
Anything else? Thank you so much for your time.
I guess I got a question for more towards Rick. Where are we at with the funding? I know we talked a little bit the other day.
Yes, we met with the Fed, and we are getting the numbers balanced. And we did a Zoom meeting. When was that? That was last week? We did a Zoom meeting with HUD or...
That's right, yeah, last week we met with our...
And we're just, they just needed to have all the numbers matched. They were working with that. But they did confirm that we could go ahead and start spending, and they'll reimburse.
Cool, all right.
Thank you.
All right, item E, Delivering Act on Raton Lodger Tax Non-Proper Request from the Raton Museum.
Mayor and Commissioner, the Colfax County Society of Art History and Archaeology, doing business as the Raton Museum, is a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) corporation established in 1939. Their Board of Trustees is requesting funding of $23,300 from the available Lodger's Tax Non-Promotional Fund for FY '24, '25. This appropriation would be used to assist in the funding and support of the museum.
Ready? And I'm assuming Kathy's here to chat to us about it. All right.
What I'll do is just hand this to Mark, and he can pass those two things around. They have to do with an event that we're going to be doing in June. So you guys can look at that while, oops, while I visit with you briefly here. As you all know, the Raton Museum and Colfax County Society of Art History and Archaeology has been in existence since 1939. We are the primary source for collection, management, maintenance, and preservation of historically significant artifacts within our community. We present the story of our rich and exciting history through art artifacts, stories of early travelers, trappers, traders, pioneers, settling the West, expansive ranches, the battle between the railroads for access to larger markets, and development of mining within the region. We provide guided tours. Roger does an awesome job of providing tours to those that come into the facility and want to take an hour and a half to do so or two. And that is growing. Most people take advantage of that. And if you look on some of the Yelp and different apps, you can see the reviews that, that are placed there in regards to their tours and what, what's going on. We're located in the Historic District of downtown Raton. And we provide the historical experience for travelers that are coming in. Our numbers this last year represent about 1% from foreign countries, 52% from states throughout the US, nine from people within New Mexico, and 38% from within our community. We've been collaborating and working with organizations and entities, local governments, school boards, and school districts, Main Street Historical Society of New Mexico, writers, artists, and program developers to, you know, help them and also provide them with research information and collaborate to be able to host different events and programs. So that's been extremely successful. We've also recently started working with MCMC for Minors' Day activities and different things along that line. So we've enjoyed doing that. We've broadened the image of the Raton Museum and brought further recognition through collaboration. In the fall of 2023, we started providing articles to the World Journal, which are historical of nature and kind of highlight different things within our region and within the community. And so that's worked extremely well. We are preparing for our fourth tour to Vermejo. And the next tour that we'll be doing in September is to Castle Rock, which is up above and near the main headquarters. And it's an interesting formation. So we'll be touring there. We also have continued to be the fundraiser for the flag that flies above the hill on Go to Hill. And so we're proud to be able to have taken that over and, and provide funding for those flags that proudly display upon Go to Hill. If you look, you will see I have provided you a list of some of the events that are going to be coming up. First of all, we have currently the Santa Fe Trail Timeline, 200-year timeline exhibit that's up and in place. And that was actually developed by the Santa Fe Trail Association in commemoration of the 200th anniversary of that trail. And so it's, we've been working and hoping to be able to get that. It's been traveling across the country. So we do have it in our gallery space, and we've highlighted some artifacts and different photographs and things that we have within our collection. So we've expanded that. We've already been visiting with the schools in regards to getting the tours for the spring. Schools primarily do field trips during the month of May. So we've already made contact, and they've reached out. And we're going to be providing tours to the children, or I should say, students throughout the region. We also will be having and hosting reception with the Santa Fe Trail exhibit, and that's going to be done on May 3. And we have Carla K. Morton and Alan Birkenbach, who are poet laureate. They are working on a book about the Santa Fe Trail. So they have memoirs and songs that they have developed. So it'll be fun to, to experience some of their, their thoughts along the trail. They have documented and actually traveled to all 64 of the national parks. So they crisscross the Santa Fe Trail quite often, and so decided that they would start that activity. So we're happy to have them there as a speaker. This year, we're going to be working with Raton Arts and Humanities Council to host the N-Bank Art Show and Sale. So that will be on June 8. I believe they'll have artwork that'll be brought in on the 8. And then the exhibit itself will be running through the 11th through the 15th with the reception. So we're excited to be able to host that in our gallery space. We also are working with an artist, author. His name is Tom. In fact, that's going around right there, Tom Ross. And he had, he does interesting stories, so to speak, with life-size art. And those are all life-size. So it's like, if there's, I think, a picture in that book that'll show you him standing next to them. And he's actually shorter than the life-size artwork. He's an artist out of Lamy. And he has this in storage. And I thought, we've got the district playoffs. It would be ideal to do Field of Dreams. And then we'll just tap onto that and add additional things, as well as coal camp photographs of the teams for the coal camps, things along that line. We are in the process of working to develop a pamphlet about the exhibit, which will kind of be a reflection of a baseball card that'll actually go into all the welcome bags or backpacks, whatever is going to be provided to each one of the team members. We'll have tickets that will be also like you're going into a ball field. And there'll be an identifying mark for each one of the athletes. The ticket is basically just so that they can enter into a drawing for a box of baseball cards, also an autograph book, you know, different things along that line. So we're excited to be able to tag on to that. We probably will have to start, well, I know our exhibit won't be up right when the girls softball district takes place, because we're crossing over between the art show and setting this up. But Tom is great to work with. He's out of Lamy, and we're excited that he's got a few other things that we're going to be working with him on to bring into the museum as well. We have a Colfax County War Presentation and Book Signing by author Corey Reco in July, August. As you well know, Dawson Reunion will be here. And we, every two years, are happy to be able to be a part of that event. We host receptions, put up displays, and things of that nature. Our Vermejo Tour, also our Annual Hall of Heroes. There's also a gentleman by the name of Rick Dias, who does a Zoom presentation on Kaiser, on Henry Kaiser, and also Kaiser Steel. So we thought that would probably be appropriate. You know, even though it's Zoom, it's not ideal. But I think it'd be, you know, of interest to the locals. And so that'll be coming up, and then our Minors' Day exhibit. And then 2025, we are working again with Tom Ross, another gentleman by the name of Bob Boz Bell, and Buckeye Blake, who are all working on a project about Billy the Kid. And they're going to start out, all three are artists. One's a sculpture. Actually, Buckeye Blake is the sculpture. And he's been commissioned by the Fort Sumner Billy the Kid Museum. They're building a new museum in Fort Sumner. And so the reason why the title is Billy the Kid Traveling Wake is the sculpture that he's done and working on is actually Billy the Kid in Repose. And it will be permanently displayed at the new museum. So they're going to travel it from Arizona to here, and then one other spot, and then back to the museum. So there's a lot of fun, exciting things that we're working on there. So I'll stand for any further questions? Actually, the, the funding that we requested, and possibly that could have been a different amount that's being proposed with the city, was $32,400.
Sounds transposed.
So it wasn't the amount that was stated earlier?
Yeah.
It's the $32,400.
Right.
Makes more sense, actually.
So I stand for any further questions?
That's all right, Rick.
Probably need to use my glasses.
Yeah.
Stand corrected, $32,000.
Nice presentation, Kathy.
Thank you.
You had to throw a baseball in there, didn't you?
We did. It's ideal. I think it's great talking with us, and I think it'll be fun. There'll be a lot of families, and I think it'll be fun for the kids. I mean, obviously, they are allowed to come in for free anyhow. And if we get a couple of parents in, the kids will drag them in. I think it'll be a lot of fun.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you for your consideration.
How many questions for you?
Thank you.
Let's go with the commission.
I am, we're killed here. Lodger's Tax Promotional Request for the Raton Museum.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the request of $32,400. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote above, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Delivering Act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commissioner, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on April 17, 2024, and made the following five recommendations. $4,500 to be awarded to the Raton Little League for the All-Stars softball and baseball. $25,300 to be awarded to run for Raton. $7,255.18 to Raton Main Street for the Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally. $9,151.20 to be awarded to Dawson, New Mexico Association. $9,151.20 to be awarded to Dawson New Mexico Association for the Dawson Reunion. And $6,925 to be awarded to Carmen Martinez for the Cinco de Mayo Celebration. You may vote on these individually or collectively.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Mestes? Or anyone that's involved in this?
I had one question on the Cinco de Mayo Celebration. The vendors and sponsors, I was just curious, what are vendor fees that would be for, how with Lodger's Tax? Usually when I hear the term vendor fee, I think the vendors are paying a fee to be in it. So I just was curious what that was.
What was the question again?
The, the vendor fees on the request? What is that going to be used for? I'm, I'm just used to vendor fees being something vendors pay to come. So I didn't know if there was some other.
No, I mean, it's going to be for our, they're paying, you know, we're putting on given. And whatever, whatever we need, we will use the vendor's fees.
Okay, because usually Lodger's Tax is really specific about that kind of thing. So the sanitation, the advertising, the music, the lodging, the insurance, that's all stuff I'm used to seeing on a Lodger's Tax application. I just wasn't used to seeing vendor fees and sponsorships. So I was curious how, how that money was going to be used.
I was new to this. And I was asking for help when I.
I totally understand. It's just usually we have a little more information just on what, what that's going to be used for.
I think this is going to be used for them to purchase items to be used by the vendors?
By, like.
No. No, the vendors, it's like a craft fair. When, you know, when you put on the craft fair, the vendors pay you to be there. That's what we're doing initially. Okay.
So that's what I'm confused about. Is normally vendors who come in pay to be part of your, your fair, your, your celebration, right? And this looks like we're paying the vendors to come in.
No, darling, you're not paying the vendors. We're, they're paying us to be.
Okay.
So Carmen, what you meant was that's income to use these fees?
So you're, on here, it's reading that we are, that the city is giving you $2,400 for the vendors?
The city isn't giving us $2,400. I, I think I.
She's talking about your request here.
Okay, I know, but I think I probably entered it wrong. And, and.
That's the money you expect to come in?
Yes.
And then the sponsorships is money you expect to come in?
Yes.
Okay, great. That, that just changes the amount of the award a little bit. So it's just in the, it's in a, it's in a different column. And I was confused by that. So I, yeah, thank you. Okay, so the award would be, actually, it's the top part, the sanitation, plus the music, plus advertisement, plus lodging, plus insurance. So it is, I have $64,250. Is that how much it says on the front?
Says $69,250.
I have $64,250 as well.
Yes.
I think that's just a math mistake.
Okay.
Okay, so the total is $64,250.
Well, I forgot to pick up that $500.
Is there a $500?
Does he use?
Is that an expense, is he a youth an expense or is that income?
We, we had stopped, maybe, you know, if we could get in, we're not even going to consider that amount at all. Because they're eight, the children that they have in their, in their organization are too young.
Too young, okay, okay.
So that can be.
So that one doesn't need to be, okay. And those go, go to income. So it's $64,250, it looks is the total for sanitation, music, advertisement, lodging and insurance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry to confuse you. I was just making sure my lines were lined up.
No, 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 well, I wasn't real, that's the first time I've done it.
It is a confusing form. I will not, I wanted this form to be done for a while. It's confusing, for sure. But thank you. So $64,250 for that one. That was my only question. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Any other questions, comments?
I think we can take these all together. They're, they're recurring events that we tend to fund every year. With that correction on, on the Cinco de Mayo, I will move to approve the, the events proposed by the Lodger's Tax Board.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. Is there any further discussion? Do you see now, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item G, Deliver a Act on Event Forms. Again, we have six of them. Rattone Main Street for the Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally. Rattone Main Street, the Carnival, June 10th, 17th through 2024. Rattone Main Street, Inc., Festival and Parade, July 4th. And we have one for Independent Writers of Rattone Run for the Wall, May 18th. Mike Patterson, Run to the Wall, July 19th through 21st, uh, Run to Rattone, sorry. And Phil Long Ford Block Party, June 15th. Mr. Mestes.
Again, Mayor and Commission, these are all pretty self-explanatory. And you may vote on these individually or collectively.
And these are just the event forms, correct?
Correct.
I did have one question. I believe it was on the, Phil Long. Says required more detail needed. Did they get that detail?
I believe that's going to happen when the event starts. Then Burke plans on going and just making sure that everything's correct.
Okay, all right. I saw them signed off on this one.
I've met with them and we've discussed the street layout and everything. Nothing, it's going to be north of Second Street. It's all going to be so.
Okay.
And if I may, it looks like Run to Rattone, the insurance and release of liability is forthcoming 30 days before the event. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve all the event forms. Give me the list of them. Okay.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event forms as noted earlier. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, Deliver a Act on Bid Award Recommendation for the Heavy Duty Side Load Dumpsters. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the city requests sealed bids. They requested sealed bids for heavy-duty side-load dumpsters. Five sealed bids were received from Roll Off USA, which was the lowest bid. There will be 108 three-cubic-yard dumpsters for $708 each for a total of $76,464. These dumpsters will be purchased in batches of 36 as funding allows. And these are to replace existing dumpsters that have been damaged and will not increase the footprint of dumpsters within the city. The funding for this project will come from solid waste reserves.
Okay, that was going to be my question. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award to Roll Off USA for the Heavy Duty Side Load Dumpsters.
Hold on a second. Motion and a second to approve the award to Roll Off USA for $76,464. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Deliver a Act on Colorado Correctional Industries' Government-to-Government Purchase of Bearproof Dumpsters and Bearproof Dumpster Repair Components. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the city requests a second purchase of additional bear-proof dumpsters from Colorado Correctional Industries. Again, these will not expand the footprint or airs that have bear-proof dumpsters. These will be used for special events, but also to be put in targeted locations like restaurants. Many will be used to replace damaged dumpsters that sanitation trucks tend to be harder on because of their weight and build. This purchase also includes a stockpile of repair parts that are necessary to keep these existing dumpsters functional. These parts will also help return existing dumpsters back into service. Again, this funding for this project will come from the solid waste reserves.
All righty. Comments, questions?
So are they changing up the design any so that they're more trash truck?
Friendly?
Friendly.
Uh, I believe not. Jason, do you want to comment?
There are slight modifications to the design, but it is only the placement of the latch from the lower corner to the center. But not significantly going to improve their durability. A lot of it tends to be that if they're not latched and they have a 45-degree angle on the lid, when it hits the trash truck, it'll tend to bend the smaller doors. And just the weight of them being bear-proof as they hit the side of the truck, they tend to have some failures. So I would say not to expect a significant improvement on it.
Do you think it would be appropriate to make a recommendation to these folks?
I, I have kind of expressed, you know, where we're seeing our points of failure. But nothing that really necessitated a design change on their part, other than the relocation of the door. A lot of it is something that we can field fix with. If it bends in a certain way, we can put a four-by-four in it, push it down and get it back in action. They are just way more maintenance than all of our other dumpsters have ever been. The previous dumpsters we approved are a metal lid. We're trying to get away from plastic lids, mostly for crows and small animals like that. But the nature of, of the bear-proof dumpster, the, the largest failure is it has a paddle latch with probably a 40-cent spring that fails inside of a $30 tack welded latch that there is no user serviceability on. And that, when, when that latch clothe or fails, it's in an open position. So it's no longer bear-proof. And it hits the truck in a weird way that bends the doors. But my biggest disappointment is that they're used incorrectly. Most of the time, the lids aren't closed. And that's the bulk of the problem to begin with.
If I remember, when we started all this bear-proof dumpster stuff, these were significantly cheaper than other ones that we looked at.
Correct. They were, and the only one that, we had to customize them to make them usable in our system. But actually, the, the bear-proof dumpsters, well, is up about $200. The last time we bought dumpsters for the regular route, they were $507. And the last batch that you approved were $708. Bear-proof dumpsters, $1,100. Just the lid assembly alone is $500. And really, the reason we didn't look to expand past the 30 is when we did the bear-proof dumpster project, if you remember, we had a 75% matching grant from Game and Fish. And I have routinely reached out every year to see if they partner again. But they have indicated that they are using those funds elsewhere. It wasn't an option at this time, but to try again next year. So we'll try again next year. Unfortunately, there's probably a list of other folks that would like to have a bear-proof dumpster. As we bear-proof certain parts of town, we move them around. But ultimately, it's a bear population problem more than a dumpster problem. Nothing I can do about that.
Never mind.
It's when you hear bears.
But a lot of what this is, when we have any events, Gate City or any of those, we always had six or eight that we kept to the side for those events. So we didn't have bears where people intermix. And as our dumpsters have failed, we've kind of put those on the street on everyday use. And then as we developed, you know, when this started, we didn't have code enforcement. But once George got on board, you know, places like Sonic, McDonald's, Arby's that weren't bear-proof originally, we're kind of poking them in the eye about the, the trash in the Arroyo. But yet, we didn't have a bear-proof dumpster for them. So that's where most of these are going to end up, is places like that.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just make the comment that, as most of you know, these are not that easy for short or, or older people. So help your neighbors out, get their trash. Not a question, I want to thank those people who came and emptied our trash.
I think that's where we get a lot of the problems where the door's left open is areas where people, they get it open and they don't want to.
No, and, you know, it's, I mean, it's kind of citizenship. You know, if you have an elderly neighbor that can't shovel their walk, if you do it. I mean, in my neighborhood, people tend to open it early in the morning and somebody at night, you know, will close it. It helps the cause, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
The Colorado Correctional Industries' Government-to-Government Purchase of Bearproof Dumpsters and Bearproof Dumpster Repair Components.
Motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item J, Deliver a Act on Spectrum Voice-Over-Internet Change Order for Phone System Upgrade. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the city requests the passage of this change order to purchase phones and supporting equipment to upgrade to American-made phones for better security. These fundings for this change order will come from savings of the new systems.
Okay. Any comments, questions? It's 128924?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Spectrum Wake Change Order for Phone System Upgrade. Hold on a second.
Motion and a second to approve the upgrade? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, Deliver a Act on Mozart Change Order Number Two for Rattone Regional Aquatic Center Repairs and Maintenance Project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the city requests your consideration for a change order for the work being done at the Rattone Aquatic Center. The change for this order include repiping the pool boiler, providing and installing a titanium plate heat exchanger. And this original contract was for $83,350. There's a previous change order for $10,000. And the amount of this change order will be increased by $31,680.48 for a newly adjusted contract amount of $125,030.49. This project will be funded by Aquatic Center GRT Funds.
Okay, so we're approving $31,680.49 plus tax, right?
Yes, sir.
The total is $34,296.76. Any questions, comments? $34,296.76 will be the total for tax.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the Rattone Regional Aquatic Center Repairs.
A motion and a second to approve the change order. $34,296.76. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, Deliver a Act on Architected Construction Change Order Number One for the Coors Building Project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the city requests your consideration for change order to architected construction for the Coors Building. This change order includes $7,380 for repairs to the existing TPO roof membrane, $20,360 for weatherproofing for the exterior back wall, $32,530 for improvements to the drainstorm system for a total of $60,170. Commissioner Honeyfield, you had requested information on valuation of the building. The insurance valuation report for May of 2023 put a value on the Coors Building of $724,900. And this change order will be. And this change order will be funded from current budget allocations for the Coors Building.
Any other questions? I did look up at the report. This was, I've got one for every city, but because of the self-insurance fund. And yeah, I was shocked at the replacement cost for that building.
What did you say it was, seven?
$724,900.
What was the date on it?
Last year.
May.
May of last year. Since you guys have been in it, you've been there through a summer, last summer, right?
Right, yes.
During a hard rain, I just noticed they're planting a four-inch sewer connection to the sewer line. Do you think that's going to handle that roof?
I'm an engineer, I couldn't speculate that. They did mention that there was concerns of the size of the drainage pipes because it is from both buildings, the surface area on the top, on the heavy downpours, they were concerned that we'd need to go to at least a four-inch pipe and run that water off.
So the way they're modifying this, it's not only having to handle the Coors Building roof, but Shark's building too?
No, if we may address that, I think Jay or I can kind of clear that up. Right now, the drainage in the patio area would only be water that fell directly in the patio area, but the flooding at the Coors Building is kind of twofold. One, that drain is not functioning, allowing water to go there, so it's flowing through the building. But the primary problem is that it's got more of a residential gutter that didn't pipe away from the building, that that, all of the water from the Coors Building roof was ending up in the patio and in the Coors Building. And in that scenario, a four-inch drain would not be sufficient. But the newly designed storm drainage system is six or eight-inch gutters, ten, six?
The new gutter on the building will be a minimum of nine-inch gutter with an eight-inch pipe, and then there's an eight-inch pipe that directs the roof water to the alley. And so that's also in the package.
So the intent is to capture all of the roof drainage before it gets in the patio area, put it into the pipe, and it'll sheet flow to the alley and just be part of the storm drain system that accumulates on First Street. The four-inch pipe is only for the small area of the patio that rain falls directly on, but with the larger gutters, the roof drainage from neither of these buildings should, much of it should end up inside the patio area. So that's why we can go to the much smaller diameter pipe. We have an eight-inch outfall taking the bulk of this drainage away from us.
Now, so we have an easement arrangement with Shark since we're going across his problem?
Yeah, well, we're actually taking part of his roof drainage as well. Right now, in the past, down the common wall, his gutters and our gutters combined into this small pipe went into the shared space between the building, and that's what's failed. Those gutters will still combine. We're not replacing his gutters, but we're taking his roof drainage into our eight-inch pipe as well as ours and going out to the east with it, west with it.
Do you think we ought to get an MOU though with him so that there's some documentation that he's okay with it?
We can, we can address some easement. I mean, it mitigates his problem as well as ours. I don't think it's necessary, but if it's something that you feel strongly about, we could definitely approach some kind of MOU or agreement that shared drainage, you know.
Well, I guess the only thing I'm looking at is that this is a long-term type situation. Decades owners change.
Right. I mean, I, certainly something that I think we could have somebody craft, you know, a simple paragraph that for perpetuity, this is where the drainage is going to be.
Right. Probably not a bad idea. Well, I mean, it just, I've seen things in court because of stuff like this that...
Yeah, and we don't really have a viable option to go a different direction, so might be prudent to do that. I'm sure he'd be agreeable to it as well.
Because I was going to say, whenever I was looking at this, it's like that four-inch patio drain won't handle it.
Yeah, I know. The way it is now, absolutely not. But in the grand scheme, I mean, definitely mitigates it.
Yeah. The only other comment I'd like to make, though, replacement cost isn't a true value of market value. So I know replacement costs would be stupid expensive, but it's not the market value of it.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the archelated construction change order number one for the Coors Building Project.
Motion and second to approve the change order for the amount of $68,170. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-26 authorizing change orders for new ladder truck and type one engine utilizing the Houston Galveston Area Council HGAC contract. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the city requests your consideration for the change order on a new ladder truck and new type one engine that we recently took possession of. During the two-year build process, various items were changed, added, and deleting, resulting in an itemized change order of $79,403.98. This amount will be from the fire protection funds and accrued interest on the 2022 NMFA
Okay, so this is our truck we got the million dollars for, and we finally here? It's here. We're out, we didn't get a chippy outfit, a truck we didn't really ask for, but we got it. Okay.
I think PD is happy to be here.
I think they are, I'm sure they are. Remember the day very well when I got the phone call that said, "We got a fire truck."
I will move to approve Resolution 2024-26, Resolution authorizing change orders for a new ladder truck and type of, type one engine utilizing the Houston Galveston Area
Yeah, motion and second to adopt Resolution 2024-26. Is there any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call into the resolution, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Thank you, approved. Item N, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-27, approval of fiscal year 24 third-quarter financial report. Mr. Mestes.
Or Michael.
Yeah, Mr. Mestes.
I surrender my remarks to the city treasurer.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So in your packet this evening, we do present to you our third-quarter report. I reconciled all of our accounts as of March 31st. So you'll see on our financial summary in the general fund operating, less our required 1/12 reserve, we currently have available cash of $4,291,713.26. I've also provided you the ending cash balances for the remainder of our funds. You will see that the April gross receipts tax distribution, which does reflect our February business activity, puts us at 5.31% above our year-to-date budget projection. Our budget projections were fairly conservative because when I just kind of compare last years with this year's, we're only 0.88% above what we collected last year. So that just shows that we were fairly conservative in our estimate. We are 9/12 into the current fiscal year, so when we evaluate our line item budgets, we're trying to monitor that we're tracking at 75% of the budget. Overall, our general fund revenues collected year-to-date are at 77%, so we've met those projections. Operational expenses are tracking closer to 61%, which would be just slightly 14% below budget. Some of that would be attributed to the fact that we did budget some additional funds out of our reserve this year, and it's, you know, possible that we haven't spent some of that money, especially like the abatement expense. We've only spent about $90,000 of that thus far. We will continue to monitor expenses, and then since we're entering into the fourth quarter as we progress, to make preparations to close out the fiscal year, we will decide if certain purchases can be delayed until the next budget year. So we are working with our department heads currently and kind of reviewing what they still have outstanding for this year. So the main thing is the goods and services would need to be received by June 30. I can still pay the invoices in July and August, but the goods and services have to be received for the end of fiscal year. So if there's any question, which we're seeing, you know, there's just a lot of delays with shipping for various items, I would propose that they delay some of those expenditures till FY '25, so we may see some of that during our budget discussions. I have provided to you the comparison reports that we track every month. You will see in the gas tax comparison, another low month, $12,263. So as we've discussed over the course of the fiscal year, that is still concerning to us because we do leverage those funds and utilize them for matching funds for DOT road improvement projects. The lodgers tax, we're still kind of seeing just about a 9% decrease there as well. And then in your packet, I did also provide the cannabis excise tax. I would say that we're on track to probably collect close to $50,000 in excise tax revenue this year. I did also include in your packet an article that I had clipped out of one of the newspapers that talked about New Mexico tops $1 billion in legalized marijuana sales. So it's nearly about two years since sales actually began in New Mexico. We've talked about this before, but we do currently levy a 12% excise tax until July of 2025, and then that's going to gradually increase to 18% beginning July of 2030. So just to give you some additional information, since that is a fairly new tax that we receive. With regards to our financial report, we are in the process of trying to close out various projects. The one we've talked about most recently is the senior center project. We are on track to expend those funds because they do revert June 30. So the contractor, I believe, has already ordered all of the supplies to build the stainless steel countertops, and so once that's done, we'll go ahead and issue final checks and request reimbursement on that grant so that we can close it out before the end of the fiscal. Other than that, I do know that the airport vault project has been put out to bid this week, so we will open bids, I think, in May 14. So that one is proceeding as well. Did want to bring something to your attention. We did have a slight reconciling error at the end of the month. It was 66702. We had a check for police training that got issued out of the general fund, but the expense got posted to the special revenue, so we've had to correct that to refund the general fund, those funds. Other than that, is there any questions regarding the third-quarter report? I do have to have this submitted to DFA before the end of the month.
Any questions from the Commissioner? Mr. Honeyfield?
So you're, going back to your summary, so your cash balance as of July of the prior year was 5.7. What do you foresee coming in to offset the difference of a million and a half before the close of this fiscal year?
We did talk about this earlier today in our financial advisory committee meeting. You will recall that we've done several temporary transfers this year, and it may have been before you took office. We have done a temporary transfer of $500,000 out of the general fund to cash flow the film school project. So most of the equipment has been ordered and is being delivered, so I would hope to get reimbursement from DFA for those purchases. And as soon as I get the reimbursement before the end of the fiscal year, I would foresee us putting the $500,000 back into the general fund. You'll see here just in a bit on our budget adjustment tonight, I am asking for another temporary transfer for the HUD grant. We probably will have to cash flow some of the architectural services until we're able to submit reimbursement on that as well. So some of that contributes to the available cash that you see today, but the intent is any temporary transfers that were made during the fiscal year, we will put that money back in the general fund as quickly as possible. The Commission also this year, for the FY '24 budget, we did budget dipping into reserves $1.6 million. So we do have several purchases and projects that we, the Coors Building being one, but abatement, we did tear down the building next to JCPenney. So we have accomplished a few things, but we'll talk about that in our budget workshop next week, and we'll kind of go through the list. And anything that we didn't accomplish or can't accomplish by June 30, the Commission can decide if we want to rebudget those items. And if you have other things that we want to utilize reserves for in the next fiscal year. I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve or adopt Resolution 2024-27, approval of fiscal year 24 third-quarter financial report.
Motion and second to adopt Resolution 2024-27. Any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-28, budget adjustment request number 12, fiscal year 24. My plan.
Mayor and Commissioner, we do bring you a budget adjustment this evening. Within the general fund, we're just looking to do some line item adjustments. With regards to the transfers, we are looking to do temporary transfer for the film school project, as I said, to cover payments for architectural services pending the reimbursement from the HUD grant. We did have a conference call with HUD last week. They've assured us that the money's awarded are the city's. We're just still pending that execution of the official grant agreement. But any expenses such as this that we've incurred, incurred, will be reimbursed with proper documentation. So like I said, we'll have to probably cash flow some of this until we get the clearance from HUD. Also, you did approve this evening the change order on the Aquatic Center, so I've included that, which will be a transfer out of the Aquatic Center grocery receipts tax. With lodgers tax promo fund, just some line item adjustments to move some funds around. At a future meeting, probably next month, we do have three billboard contracts that'll be coming due that we'll take to the Lodgers Tax Board for recommendation to the Commission. Under our street improvement fund, I did find that we had budgeted or rebudgeted for the Chipso project. That project actually had been completed as of June 30 last year, so I'm taking out the revenue and the expense, and then the city's match that we had pledged towards that. I'm just putting that towards professional services because we did discuss that the small bridge project, the funding we're receiving from the DOT does not include the desert. the funding we're receiving from the DOT does not include the design services. So we will have to pay for those services or the engineering expense out of our gas tax. I did want to request one correction based on another action taken this evening. So the dumpsters were approved. We had the bid of seventy-six thousand four sixty-four. And then the total, I guess I overlooked the second. There was two pages to the Bearproof dumpsters, and the total of the two pages was sixty-two thousand one hundred. So instead of a hundred and fourteen thousand, I would need to change that figure to a hundred and thirty-eight five sixty-four. And the fireworks, we did previously approve the contract for the Fourth of July fireworks purchase. We do have roughly four thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars available in donations from the previous year. That will be spent first, and then the balance, twenty-seven thousand two eighty-eight, was budgeted to come out of the lodgers tax. For you, is there any questions?
Questions, the comments from the...
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-four twenty-eight, budget adjustment request number twelve fiscal year twenty-four, with the correction on fund five hundred to one thirty-eight five sixty-four.
Motion down a second to adopt resolution twenty-four, twenty-two-four twenty-eight. Any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
R and P, City Managerie for, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, as we mentioned earlier, the city is getting ready for summer with a lot of events on the horizon. These events are going to keep us busy. Jason Phillips, George Riley, Kevin Nolan, and I met with the local community organization to plan spring cleanup day, or as the group calls it, talking trash about beautifying Raton. We discussed what areas of town needed the most attention, and we're all in agreement to focus on the Clayton Highway. We're going to meet at the Welcome Center on June first at eight AM, and we'll have the table set up with volunteers that can sign a waiver, and then we'll have a snakey briefing before cleanup starts. The city is happy to support all activities to beautify the town. With big rocks, the treasurer, it's budget season, and all departments have been given their budget worksheets. With the police, the city police have continued to receive positive feedback on the cameras, and they've been able to utilize them as an effective force multiplier. With fire, the fire department responded to the murder that occurred at the Tinaha Rest Area. They proceeded to provide assistance to the victim's spouse until the next day, and our hats go off to them. In public works, the Little League kickoff was major success, and the fields are in great shape, and the new restaurants have been a big hit. Engineering, the water board application was approved for one point two-five million in loan and grant funding. This now goes forward to New Mexico Finance Authority for final determination to determine the mix of loan and grant funds we will receive. I thank our city engineer, Jayden Welch, for all of his hard work. With facilities, we had ceiling tiles come down at Amtrak station and are assessing the damage. We hope that this was not a major failure of the structure, but just bad installation, and will be referred shortly. Our city clerk has been very busy issuing licenses, and we hope to be caught up by next week. In economic development, as stated earlier, the city went to Gama, Oklahoma, to learn firsthand about the new casino that they partnered with in the last decade, and I believe it was a very positive trip. The Pickarus Governor will be visiting Raton in May, and we'll set up a date for a meeting greet. With mentions and dispatches, I would like to give a shout out to officers Gerald Stewart and Richard Garcia, who apprehended Ronald Collier, an escapee out of Colorado, being held on first-degree burglary with assault, third-degree assault, and menacing and armed with a deadly weapon. Mr. Collier had overpowered a deputy and security officer and stole a vehicle in Colorado and made it as far as Raton where he's apprehended by our officers. So a shout out to them. I'd also like to recognize city clerk Desiree Trujillo for her getting this room back in shape after we did all the renovations. And finally, some closing thoughts. I'd like to read something from the World Economic Forum. Education is a cornerstone of opportunity, both for individuals as they develop valuable knowledge and skills, and for society as future generations push new boundaries of innovation and productivity. But today's education is not designed for tomorrow's world. This is a vital decade of action. As the world seeks to sustain economic growth while addressing social inequity and climate change, the changes we make in the next ten years will be key to setting us on the right path to a more equitable and sustainable future. With small and medium-sized businesses accounting for ninety percent of all companies and responsible for seventy percent of the world's job and gross domestic product, entrepreneurship will drive this transformation. These businesses will play a critical role in propelling the global economy forward. Yet innovators and disruptors are not born overnight. Entrepreneurial minds must be cultivated. To build a game-changing business, every entrepreneur first needs the indispensable foundation of a quality education. Year spent in school broaden their perspective, help build their knowledge and confidence, and nurture their passions for lifelong learning. In Raton, this means us. I'll be discussing education more in our coming meetings, but I believe Raton can really prosper, and we can really grow places, but the vehicle that we need to take us there is education. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mike Lynn, can you refresh the commission on our budget workshop date?
So we would like to confirm that we'll have a special city commission next Tuesday meeting. We would like to, prior to that meeting at five, if we could, have a budget workshop from five to six. And then the special meeting would be at six o'clock, and we have several zoning resolutions that would be on that agenda.
That's April thirtieth.
Yes. So if that works for everybody, we would like to arrange to have the department heads here to give very brief presentations on what their budget needs are. I will have a draft prepared for discussion as well.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, five if we could, yes.
I have a conflict, but I can, I can work around it. I was hoping for Monday, got more, more games.
I'm sorry, I thought you told us the thirty.
I thought it was good, too, and then I looked and, yeah. It's our schedule.
Is there any objection if we do it Monday from the commission?
It's impossible for me on Monday. Unless you want to meet at seven-thirty or eight PM.
So we certainly, if you could get any comments or anything that you would like for us to...
No, I'll, I'll miss.
Oh, okay.
I'll miss my family.
And we have a special right after that.
Correct. Yeah, apologize, we have a very short window here to really pull this all together and get a good draft so that the first meeting in May, we could have kind of a almost complete draft, make some minor changes, and then bring the final interim budget for consideration at the second meeting in May.
This is a movie in Cupertino, California. I couldn't get it to go to five o'clock. That figures. All right, any other comments from the commission? Mr. Honeyfield, anything? Mr. Jacomo?
Nothing.
Mr. Schuster?
I think I've put in enough.
You're pro tip.
I'm good.
I have nothing, this meeting stands a jury. Thank you.